2025 Regular Meeting of the Milton Planning Commission to Order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? This is a regular meeting of the Milton Planning Commission. I am Chairperson Judy Birds. This is a seven-member commission appointed by the City of Milton Mayor and City Council, created for the purpose of holding public hearings and making recommendations on rezonings, use permits, concurrent variance applications, comprehensive land use plan and plan map, and other related plans, and amendments to the zoning ordinance. In attendance tonight, we have Commissioner Vic Jones, Commissioner Sumit Shaw, Commissioner Brian McNeese, Commissioner Kurt Nolte, and we're expecting Commissioner Trey James to arrive from the airport shortly. Absent this evening in addition to currently Commissioner James is Fred Edwards. Can I get a motion and a second regarding adoption of the October 22nd, 2025 Regular Planning Commission meeting agenda?
In June, oh, I'm sorry.
I will find out the agenda for the October 22nd meeting is published.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a motion from Commissioner Nolte with a second from Commissioner McNeese to approve the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up is consideration of the minutes and actions of previous meetings. Can I get a motion and a second regarding the approval of the June 22nd, 2025 Regular Planning Commission meeting action minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the action minutes of the June 25th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
A second.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Shaw with a second from Commissioner Jones to approve the minutes of the June 25th, 2025 Regular Planning Commission meeting action minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Do we have any general public comment?
We do not.
We do not. Okay, we will go to our next item. And the next item is consideration of preliminary plats. Tonight, we have one preliminary plat to consider. But before we begin, there are a few instructions I will read prior to the item being called. The Planning Commission is tasked by the city's subdivision ordinance to conduct a public hearing on proposed preliminary plats that have been found to be complete by the Community Development Department. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission is required to review the proposed preliminary plat and provide comments and make recommendations regarding the plat to the Community Development Director. The Planning Commission does not approve or reject the proposed preliminary plat, but merely provides comments or recommendations based on the public hearing and the Planning Commission's review of the proposed preliminary plat. The preliminary plat on tonight's agenda is for Little River Farms Phase Two, Blackberry Ridge Trail, for 10 lots on 16.6 acres at a density of 0.6 units per acre by Chatham Neighborhoods LLC. I would like to call up our zoning manager, Robin McDonald, to present the staff report for Little River Farms Phase Two.
Good evening, Madam Chair and High Commissioners. Tonight, we have a preliminary plat submitted for Little River Farms Phase Two by Chatham Communities. It is located at the end of Blackberry Ridge Trail.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, thank you. It's the first time I've been at this diocese. Been a while. It is located at the end of Blackberry Ridge Trail within Phase One of Little River Farms, which is located near the intersection of Batesville and Taylor Road. The site is zoned AG1. The site is zoned AG1 and located within the rural Milton Overlake District. It contains 16.6 acres with a Little River to the west of the site and providing the west property line for the development. To the north is Taylor Glen Subdivision, zoned AG1, and developed with single-family homes. To the south is Little River Farms, which is a rural event facility. And to the east is the Phase One of Little River Farms, which is a gated subdivision with private streets. There is a floodplain located along the Little River. You can see it in this gray, as well as the required stream buffers for the state and city and non-impervious setback for a total of 75 feet. So that's what these three lines are, parallel to the river here, and it's primarily within the floodplain. As stated before, the applicant is proposing to develop 10 single-family lots that range in size from 1.2 to 2.3 acres. Included in the plan is a stormwater facility located on its own lot toward the Little River. For AG1 zoning, the district setbacks are 60-foot front, 50-foot rear, and 25-foot sides. As a note, driveways may encroach into the setbacks and be located along a property line, as you can see in the schematics here. The maximum lot coverage for this development is 25%, which consists of any impervious areas, including but not limited to driveways, rooftops, decks, and swimming pools. The lot coverage will be evaluated at the time of each individual building permit. Staff has asked the applicant to show the probable maximum amount of development for each lot, which is reflected in the site plan. As you can see, there's the driveway, there's a building footprint, there's a pool, and the potential location of primary and secondary septic fields, as well as a drainage area, which will be more precisely determined at the time of the LDP. In regards to the tree canopy ordinance, a minimum of 57% tree canopy is required for the overall 16.6 acres. So when we look at it, we look at it as a whole. And then ultimately, for each individual lot, at the time of each building permit and the development of each lot, they need to meet the 57%. Also, the existing mail kiosk in Phase One will be utilized for Phase Two. Based on the submitted plans, the preliminary plat meets the regulations of the Unified Development Code. And with that, I will be open to any questions or comments. And also, I just want to make note, we have our arborist here, as well as our stormwater engineer. So if you have any specific topics to ask about, they're here at your disposal.
The plat shown here is with the 50-foot setbacks, is that correct?
Right, so the buildings are located at the required 60-foot front and 50-foot rear, but there's also another line, a lighter line, that shows the applicant wanting to do a 50-foot front setback and a 60-foot rear setback. So basically, flip-flopping and being able to move the house a little bit further away from the rear and toward the street. And you may ask, well, how would he do that? Currently, we have a text amendment in the cycle to propose this flip-flopping of the setbacks, front and rear, for limited circumstances. So that's assuming that the text amendment is approved. It'll come to you in November and then go to City Council the first meeting in January. But at this point in time, he can still develop it with the 60-front and the 50-rear.
I may have some more questions later, but anyone else have any further questions now? Okay, let us now hear from the applicant for the preliminary plat for Little River Farms Phase Two.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I am Scott Reese for Bromwell Reese and Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. I'm here tonight representing Chatham Neighborhoods in their application for a preliminary plat for a 10-lot subdivision located on 16.6 acres. The property is zoned AG1 and will be developed under the design guidelines of Ag1 Zone by Rock Subdivision. The proposed subdivision is Phase Two of Little River Estates, which was 15 lots on 27.5 acres. It was previously developed in the same manner. The property is part of the original Little River Farms Dairy and Egg Farm owned by the Ivy family for over 70 years. The property has been developed into the Atlanta National Golf Course and Subdivision, Valmont Subdivision, Little River Farms Event Facility, and the previous Phase One of Little River Estates. This will be the last of the Ivy property. The plan before you was developed by licensed professionals based upon applicable sections of the City of Milton Unified Development Code. The plan was reviewed by the City of Milton professional staff and found to be completely compliant with the Milton Unified Development Code. A Level 3 soil survey was performed by licensed soil scientists and has been preliminarily reviewed by the Fulton County Board of Health and found to be compliant. Before you see the map of the property, you have Cherokee County to the west with a Milton Overlook subdivision developed into half-acre lots. To the north, the Taylor Glen subdivision also developed under the AG1 one-acre lot development. Across the street is the Valmont subdivision, one-acre lot. To the south is the Little River or the Atlanta National Golf Course. And to the east is Phase One of the Little River Farms Estate. Kind of just an overlook there. On your next slide, this is the 16.6-acre survey showing the raw piece of land, its connectivity to the Phase One, and the Little River stream on the west. Okay, next one. Here's the soil survey prepared by Geosciences Inc., Dr. Sam Asadi. And then this is the clean preliminary plat. We have the, I've tried to show a proposed 50-foot front and a 60-foot rear that would allow us to preserve more property along the rear. I'm going to touch on that just a little bit later. Go to the next one. All right, so before you now is the design requested by the city staff, and they told me to design the maximum-size house with a pool and the initial and reserve septic system. Please understand that the reserve septic system is 150% of the size of the initial. That is a fail-safe system that, since we have gone from the old single-pipe to the high-capacity chamber systems, the failure rate is very, very nil. But the health department is extremely cautious because condemning a house due to the lack of ability to place a septic system on is a very litigious matter, as you can imagine. So please be aware that that giant septic system, that only 60% of that, of the initial, or 50% of what you see, 150% of what's on your screen, is a reserve system that will probably never be installed, but for design criteria, we have to show it. So what you see before you is, I guess if you were a neighbor, you would call the worst-case scenario. What we were told to design is the maximum yield, because I think in the past, people have brought forth to you 30-by-40 cottages and a dreamscape, and then when it was built, was not what was originally. This is, this is the maximum build-out on the lot. All right, let's go to the next one. This is just an aerial there, showing the, the street through there. There's an old farm field that's over half of the street. Go to the next one. So this is the largest house footprint that I could find in Phase One. And I just wanted to give you a feel for, instead of just a box and supposeds, this is actually what was permitted, the last lot with the Figus footprint in Phase One. So what we've highlighted in red is what actually is the limits of disturbance with a, I think this is even a six-bedroom house, with a pool and the initial septic system, all the grading that would be encompassed in that. So that area highlighted in red was what had to be cleared, the limits of disturbance for the largest house in Phase One. So there, I was trying to give you a more realistic point of view as opposed to just a box and a box and a box. All right, let's go to the next one. So after being advised of neighborhood opposition and trying to find a way to best, provide the best product and preserve, my applicant has no desire to cut any, any, any single tree or grade any more earth or spend any dollar on development, then he absolutely possibly will have to. So in this scenario, I'm proposing a 40-foot front building setback. That building setback is in agreement with or greater than White Columns, the gated section, the Triple Crown subdivision, and the Kingsley subdivision, all that are neighborhoods in this general area that have been developed, over 600 houses. Triple Crown and Kingsley were developed with a 30-foot front building setback, and White Columns, the gated part, was developed with a 25-foot setback. So we're proposing a 40, meaning the front of the house would be 50 feet from the back of the curb, and a 70-foot rear setback, meaning no structure could be placed closer than 70 feet to the rear property line, trying to generate as much privacy set aside area. And I've cleared this with the owner of the property, the developer, and the financier of the whole project. We're also proposing this blue line. So now, in the standard UDC code, a Ag1 zone property can place a pool within 10 feet of the rear property line. We're proposing to double that to 20, 20 feet. If not, we would be amenable to moving that to 25 feet, to create an area back there that would not, would be set aside. Now, we fully understand that when the property, an individual buys it, they may clear trees, but we have no desire to get back there. We're going to, we would love to keep everything in the front and preserve as much of the rear of the property as. I will have to go, I'm sure come before you guys and City Council for approval of this. I personally, after 40 years in the industry, can really not find anything negative to say about pulling these houses closer. If, if we were on a thoroughfare in the city, this is a gated dead-end street. To be offended by how close the houses are to the street, you'd have to be invited in the neighborhood. This is not something I would say for Freemanville Road, Birmingham Highway, but in this case, I think it is the best situation to preserve as much. It gives me a better chance to preserve a unified tree line, which benefits wildlife from an environmental standpoint, from a stormwater standpoint. It gives me much more leeway. So that is our proposal that we would like to pull the houses closer and expand the setback on the rear. So I've tried to go through and not get into the technicalities too much in the essence of preserving time. Any technical questions or anything else? I will be glad to try to answer those when you have the, your question and answer period. Thank you.
Does the Commission have any questions for the applicant?
What are the setbacks on, front setbacks on Phase One? Are they 60?
They are, they are the standard 60/50, but the lot that adjoins this, due to specimen trees that were in the backyard, we were the home builder for that obtained a variance to reduce their front building lineup. And that is on the south side of the street. So it has been, it was reduced by an individual variance, and I think it went to 40. Don't shoot me if I'm lying, but I'm pretty sure. I know it was granted because there were specimen trees and the preservation of those precluded pushing the house forward. The one to the north, if you look at this hard angle, the way the street comes in, this house will still, due to that angle, be pushed back far enough that I think it would not cause a detriment or an aesthetic difference because you're coming around that corner, and the way we're going to set back, it would be primarily in there. The 40-foot would not, I think, affect that lot negatively either, due to that angle.
So you're saying there has been a variance granted on another lot in?
That the adjoining lot, scrolling here, which is Lot?
Six.
Lot six. So Lot six, and they are LDP for their individual house, reduced their front setback to preserve trees in the back, and it is pulled closer. And I really think, I don't, there probably can't remember any more than I can, but I think it was reduced to around 40 feet.
Do we, would we know, or is there any way of estimating if we were trying to pull, for example, the primary septic field out of the buffer? Okay, so if we're moving the house up?
Okay. Please tell me what buffer?
Okay, the rear, if we look at the rear.
The rear setback.
Rear setback.
Okay, all right.
We look at, you know, right now, we've got some of the, it looks like primarily the secondary.
Yes, we, it would all be, we would design on the individual lots. This were, this was a larger engineering firm and I communicate, and my poor lack of communication did not pull all of them. But the initial will be, due to cost and design criteria, would be as close to the house as possible. Now, I've got, there is a natural drainage way where the water is flowing now, and that we picked up with the topography. Now, when these lots are graded, it is our intent to manipulate that natural drainage way to minimize that distance back there. So, but we have not, we do not have a full-blown, in-depth hydrology study. That will be part of the LDP, but it will be our intent. So we would, now, the 70-foot structure setback, the BSL, there will, you know, if I pull 40 feet, I think that, oh, now, I can't guarantee you if someone comes in with an eight-bedroom house because the length of the field lines is based upon the amount of water usage, which is, they're used, the parameter of number of bedrooms to, to size those systems. But pulling that forward will allow us to work from the street back and preserve as much of that rear as, as is possible.
For clarifications, Scott, if the, for the primary drainage field, you would have to clear the trees, but you would not need to clear the trees for the secondary until you have to, in case you had to use it.
Until a failure. And there are technologies that now allow us to go sometimes deeper. So I'm sure you have all were at bated breath to hear a discussion of field lines and septic systems.
We love affluent.
Right, so the standard design is a field line, 10 feet of separation, and another field line. So when they fail, we, 50% of the time, can come in and place the new trench or the high-capacity chamber system in that 10-foot in-between and, and not even have to go. But like I say, after the Huntcliff fiasco in Sandy Springs, where a few houses were condemned, the health department went over and above to make sure that there is ample room. There's basically enough room for two systems in what they designed for a reserve system. And that reserve system would only be installed at the failure of the initial system, and it would typically be 50% of what you're shown, what is depicted as a reserve, because that is a standard system, which is the old pipe, which is 100%, and a chamber system is 65%. So we're in reduction, but they must, I have to show that, or I have to have that design capability. So now, that would not be touched until the failure of the initial system.
The design of the septic fields, if I look at lots one and two, is the orientation of them perpendicular to the north property line.
That is correct.
Because of the topography of?
They have to run with the contour.
Goes right, because it generally goes high to low, right northeast to southwest.
Stop, start to interrupt, but when we grade the lots, we will then at, as the example I put up on the screen, we typically create a flat area in the backyard, and then we can run east-west, north-south. This is existing topography, untouched, LIDAR-based, existing conditions that the health department is, I have no idea what house is going on here, any configuration. When we design the house, we typically grade, you cannot put field lines in fill, F-I-L-L, F-I-E-L-D lines in F-I-L-L. They can be placed in cut, because that is cut. So that is still natural soil that has the permeability, the pore spacing of a natural soil that works under a standard field line system. But compacted fill or just, you can't go in, if you've got a, an abyss or a chasm or a hole, and fill it with dirt and throw field lines in. I can't do that. I can cut out off a hillside and place systems in. And then I create a flat area that allows me to go east-west, north-south, whatever. But I'm having to use existing topography.
The, couple of questions then on lots. On Lot 9, I was kind of surprised it wasn't designed closer to Lot 10, which would preserve some of the back trees where the primary is closer to the house and the secondary ones behind it.
I apologize, this is a template. I guarantee you that rectangle that you see on the screen is not going to be built on that lot.
That would, that would be 8,000 foot, like?
But I was instructed, and I agree with that, that we should not come in before you with a 30-by-40 cottage purporting that that's what's going to be built. What I was instructed because of past indiscretions, I don't think I was guilty of that, but? This is the largest footprint. That I can fit with the twenty five percent impervious setbacks or the impervious area coverage on this lot.
And the large, the largest footprint in phase one is what, six thousand square feet?
Ah, somewhere that, the, the house you see before you there was the largest footprint. The problem that we as designers are price points dictate certain things. And we're at a price point now that. The number of garages is, I'm. Just takes my breath away, but if you're, if I am told if you build a five million dollar house, you better have eight or ten garages. I probably won't ever have that problem, but.
I just want to make sure the records reflect that Commissioner James has joined us.
Thank you.
So, and I, you know, I appreciate your reworking to move it up the ten feet to forty.
Well, that would be twenty.
Correct.
From, from existing conditions.
Twenty feet.
Right. And I did the research to find out, was I proposing something that had not happened? I found at least five hundred lots in this general area being triple crown, two hundred and something lots. The gated phase of um white palms, three hundred and something, Kingsley, a hundred lots. That were all developed with less, and I don't know if any, I'm, I think you've probably all been at least one of those neighborhoods. And they do not feel, I was just this afternoon in Claxton with brand new sodded lawns. And the distance, because they had to grade everything, the distance from the road to the house. And that giant amount of sod that's going to have to be sprayed and water, guys, we can do better.
Well, is there, and again, this may not even be realistic, but is there, how much can we, how much would you guys be willing to move it up? Would we, you'd be willing to thirty five, you'd be willing to thirty? And again, that's, that's a question for us to do if we want to.
So I am. On this, the, the scale of the houses that I know will be built. I really think I'm most comfortable with the forty foot setback, meaning a fifty foot. Distance from the back of curb, just the scale and. That, that would be where I would, I think, you know, going through the other, I was in Kingsley not very long ago. It does not feel like the, the houses are extremely close to the street and that is a thirty. But I am most happy with this forty, thirty five maybe, and, but I would. I'm also not, I'm a representative of the applicant and I would, before I. Come before you guys with a proposal, I would want to, the forty, I, I'm a hundred, I've. You know, we've discussed that, we went out, measured fifty feet back from the curb and said, you know, a big house does not feel. At all uh too close to the street.
So what I'm looking at obviously is every foot we move it forward.
Well, I understand, yeah, it, it gives me more backyard. Right. Because every, as I pull the house forward. It's a magnet that pulls everything else forward. And as a side note. That's less impervious area that has to be put in to get to the house and, you know, whether you're. Yeah, I don't, there are very few people that hate clean water or clean air, but if you are one of them. Um, it's just, just ignore the side effect that is a positive uh in many other aspects.
Um, another question on the aerial showing the trees. So it's more of a aerial photograph? Is that a fairly recent photo?
That is the twenty twenty five or twenty twenty four Milton GIS.
Okay.
So.
That is recent.
This. Zoom in here. So this is the remnants of a hayfield. In here and I'm going to say for fifty percent of the street. Clearing and grading will not take a single tree out. And in our part of the development. We will put a limits of disturbance, you know, ten feet behind the uh. The, the right of way set aside and we won't touch anything else while, when we're building the subdivision. When an individual lot is sold and permitted, then they will have to bring their design into the city. And show um everything there, their tree preservation, their tree canopy compliance, uh. Their, their uh compliance with the impervious area.
And is this consistent with how it looks today or has had additional grading been done?
This is exa- that, nothing has been touched. There is, well, you've said, so um. At the temporary end for, at the request of the fire marshal. We installed a gravel turnaround for safety purposes. And it's, it's shown on this air. That is the only area that a piece of equipment has touched of this sixteen point six acres. Did I answer, was that what you were asking?
Yes, and then um. With these ten lots, how many lots are in phase one? So what is the total number of lots?
So um, phase one was fifteen acres on twenty seven point two. And I have, so the fire marshal, we have addressed, we are under the requirement for a secondary. Access for emergency vehicles. I anticipated it. Great minds think alike.
It's been roughly the same density between sixteen to phase one?
Very, I mean.
Within a couple.
Yes, it's within, within tenths or hundreds. So it's, it's ten on sixteen versus fifteen on twenty. It's, it's. So our. Smallest lot in here is one point two acres, fifty two thousand square feet. Our largest is two. Um, I think maybe it was, there was a one, one, I think one lot um in phase one. But they, acre and a half somewhere, they were, we just, we personally can't fit. The Milton house on a forty three, five sixty. Uh, now this, this is a different design criteria. So phase one was developed under the old standards of a hundred feet of minimum width at the building line. This is under the new one fifty and that is causing a little bit, that's. A reason why I think that we really need to revisit the building setbacks. So your old design criteria of a hundred feet of width. So a hundred to get to forty three, five sixty, we had a, a lot of lots that were a hundred, hundred and twenty feet wide. And three fifty, four hundred feet deep. So you had a, a much longer run. When the city and I was a hundred percent in agreement to expand the width of the lot. But when you do the math, if you divide forty three, five sixty by one fifty. Then if Y is one fifty, X drops. Um, as, an associative manner. So now we have. Wider, less deep lots in the, the math. So that to me is a, a very good reason to reduce or. If you want to call it reverse, the fifty sixty. So right now. In a gated neighborhood, the standard is. Push the house back sixty feet from the right of way and preserve and, and do not let a structure be built closer than fifty feet to the rear. That to me does not make sense. You, you are affecting the rear property line. It should be the larger of the two instead of the reverse. At the time, I was trying to make it the most simple I could, hey, just reverse it, same numbers, reverse it. After going through this and, and try, and, and trying to be empathetic to the adjoining neighbors. How could I come up with a better solution? And my proposal is a forty foot front and a seventy foot rear and more than double the pool setback.
I think the concern everyone has, the expectations were set. You know, back in May or whenever we went through this with the five.
I'm going to let the applicant's legal represent, representative answer those questions. Because they have a, a little bit different take, but if you want to ask the question about. What was presented as far as um, I would, I would, I would like for the owner's rep to answer.
Okay, we probably should do that, but do we want to, those in opposition?
We have missed, well, it's not opposition, but we, it's a little different because we have a representative for the property owner, Mr. Rich K. So he's kind of, it's like a dual application. So if you want to have him come up to speak before we get to the opposition.
Did we do this now or should we do it?
Yes. Yes, okay, Mr. Rich K. Yep.
Hello, my name is Rich K. Uh, I'm at the law firm of Pearson and Ferdinand. I live in Sandy Springs, Georgia. I've represented the Ivy Trust for uh about twenty years, ever since the Ivy, since George H. Ivy passed. I did a lot of work for um, for Mr. Ivy before he passed. Basically, um, you know, Mr. Ivy and his brothers were developers and they developed Buckhead. Uh, did a lot of development in Sandy Springs as well. George, George's um philosophy was to buy triple net lease properties. That's, that's where he believed that value was for his trust, for his legacy. And for the past twenty years, I've bought an IHOP in Kalaspeel. Uh, I've bought a genuine auto parts in Buffalo, New York. Um, Jiffy lubes and, and lots of other uh small. Uh, triple net lease properties where basically, I think you all know what triple net lease property is. We get a check every, every, uh, every month for rent. And the occupant pays for the insurance and, and the upkeep and, and the taxes. Every one of those um properties were leveraged. Um, we would put down our twenty or thirty percent and the rest was leveraged with bank loans. Our bank loans were tied or all are tied to the interest rates. And over the past seven or eight years, those interest rates, as you all know, because everybody talks about it on the news, have been very high. And basically where we were seeing rate of returns of eight percent. Um, on our properties, we're now down to about one percent. Um, the trustees of the trust are the grandsons of um, two grandsons of George H. Ivy. He put them in charge over his two sons, George and, and Greg Ivy. Um, and um, um. We um, um, on behalf of the trustees, we, our duty is to get the best returns we possibly can for our beneficiaries. We have two older beneficiaries in their seventies and early eighties. Um, that have real needs right now, financial needs that they're not able to cover themselves. We are not able to cover that with what Little River Farms is paying in lease payments um on the events facility. Um, we have one other property again, um, that we use as an events facility, which again. Is, has, pays, pays a small rent. It's a Marietta. So right now, the cash flow to the two elder. Um, um, beneficiaries is very low. We also have one um, beneficiary, one of the, the grandchildren who is disabled and cannot work. So the, so the reason I'm telling you the story is what brought us to sell this property now. Our original plan was, as you know, we developed or the trust developed. Um, the first phase of Little River Farms Estates and we did the development on that. And. We decided that. And just in terms of timing and, and return, because people have a real need for this money now. That the best thing to do would be to sell this property. Um, and what I want to do is just give you a little history because I'm, I'm going to be defensive here a little bit. Because I think that's, goes to your, your question, sir. We have been using, like most people, um, we've been using Scott Reese and Brumbolo Reese. As our engineers for really everything we do, um, for the special use permits and everything else that we do. Um, we um, in the context of our special use permit. We carved out this sixteen acres because really we weren't using it, number one. And, and number two, for the reasons we just mentioned, we needed to sell it. We. We went through Scott and we asked, um, we asked Scott back when we were going to develop it ourselves. To give us some scenarios as to what we could do with that sixteen acres and what we could do with the entire property. I mean, how, how could we develop that? And Scott did some rough plats for us, placing, um, we had two scenarios. One of those was um, um, five acre, I'm sorry, five lots of three acres. Another one was very similar to what, that's not up there anymore, very similar to the plan that Scott presented today. Um. The subject of our special use permit was really. To me, who cares what we do with the sixteen acres is really, was the way I felt because. Because the requirements of a special use permit for an events facility was to have five or more acres. I mean, we could have carved out thirty more acres and said, hey, we just want to get rid of those thirty acres. Um, and certainly been within our rights and qualified for, you know, our special use permit by virtue of just having five acres. So when people kept asking about what do you want to do with, with those, with that, with that track of land, I mean. We were very, very forthright and we're, we're going to sell it. We're not going to develop it ourselves. Well, do you have any, um, I think Ra- uh, Robin and, and the planning commission asked us for scenarios. And. We were very reluctant to provide any scenarios because we don't know what the buyer is going to do. I mean. We, we didn't want to limit what the buyer could, could use it for. Maybe we would have one estate, right? Maybe baseball player or ex-CEO of a large company would want to come in and, and, and. Build an estate there, a compound, what have you. But, but we did have two proposed plans and, and reluctantly, we provided those two plans. To um, to the, the, the staff. One plan was for the five. Tracks. The other plan was a full development plan with a line drawn to show this is what. It would be that sixteen acres. And um, with containing ten lots. Um. And. When we, when, again, as the lawyer that I am, I mean, I, I wanted to make sure that. Whatever we gave to the staff and whatever we presented, we put a disclaimer on it. And in fact. When we sent both of these, um, well, actually Scott sent both of these um proposed plans. Um, I wanted a disclaimer put on both of those plans. And the disclaimer was, this plat is not submitted for approval. It represents only one possible development plan for the property. Um, and um, buyer will determine development and use. Now. That was just my CYA, you know, lawyer stuff. But we made it pretty clear that, you know, this, that, that we, that we wanted to. Um, that we wanted to leave it up to the buyer and. In fact, during the, the hearing, uh, in the presentation, I'm looking at the staff report. Um, for the hearing that was presented. Um, by the staff. The only scenario that they placed in there in, in the presentation to y'all was. And, 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 and to the council was the, was the five track with our excul- exculpatory language. When it was presented. Um, th- th- these are the words of the staff. Now, these are, these are not my words. Based upon the issues raised at the CZIM. Staff asked the applicant to provide a potential development scenario. For the sixteen point five acres that is being proposed to be eliminated from the current. for the 16.5 acres that is being proposed to be eliminated from the current use permit. This scenario provides for five three acre minimum large lots that front on a cul-de-sac. At this point in time, it is unknown how the property will be developed as it could potentially be one acre estate lots or larger lots or a single estate lot. By no means does this site plan require the property to be developed in this manner. The purpose of the site plan is to show the community one potential way the property could be developed. Now, why the staff chose to present that one scenario and not both scenarios, I don't know. That's a question for them. But we were very clear, again, whatever, whatever the buyer wants to do with the land is up to the buyer. We're no longer the developers. We chose not to be that developer. We chose to assign our development rights to a purchaser. Any reduction in, in the amount of lots for this particular piece of property is going to be money that's, that is going to be less money that we have to distribute to our elder beneficiaries and our disabled beneficiary. I don't know what the concept is or people would think about, you know, what, how much money we have. We rich folks, we're not. And this is the only income that these beneficiaries at their age and the disabled beneficiary has to support itself. We need to maximize the price. And again, I feel that I'm, I'm being defensive. I don't know why I need to be defensive here. But we were pretty clear about what our intent was from day one. We, we put the dis, dis, disclaimers on there. I think the staff was very clear when they presented it to, to you and they presented to everyone who was in attendance, that this was one possible scenario. It could be one acre track, everything else. So that's, I just wanted to, to, to set the record straight on that. And if people have selective memories as to what was told to them, whatever, what we have is what we have in writing. And we have an email stream and, and everything else to back it up. I sent it to counsel yesterday when it came up as an incident. So, you know, if, if you have any questions of me, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer.
I mean, it appears in, in the whole justification, it appears like you understand from our point of view.
We do.
And I think from the neighbor's point of view, it looks like a clear bait and switch. It looks like we're coming, you know, this is what we were presented. This is what we, you know, went through the whole use permit and carved that out and provided all that. You know, based on, based on this, I would love to have the other one. I think that would have been good, but it does feel very, you know, bait and switches, in other words I could hear.
I, I shared with your counsel the email of the two scenarios that were sent by Scott Reese to the staff. I didn't send them. Scott sent the two scenarios himself. And those two scenarios were, as I said, one, like the one we're looking at today and one with the, with, with the five three acre tracks. I didn't select which one was presented, okay? And again, I think the staff was pretty clear that we had no control. And we've always said we've had no control over what they're going to do. It's not us. Whatever the buyer is going to do, the buyer is going to do. And, and so, Mr. Nolte, I understand the, the point, if it was in fact true, but it's not. And again, when, when you, when you, when you read our disclaimer, when, when you understand our hesitancy to provide anything at all, right? I mean, we were, we were kind of like forced to do it. And it was, and again, we didn't do, we didn't do an end plat. We, we didn't do a plat for filing. This was just, okay, Scott, if we're, if we're going to develop this, this lot, show us what we can do here. That's what we had, okay? And, and I thought they forced us to sort of send these, but it's like, okay, well, we, we don't want to limit what the buyer can do here, but if you want to see what we've kind of done, here it is. And we, and we did present two. So if you talk about who did the bait and switch, it wasn't us, okay? The staff decided to not present both of them, but to present one. And I don't think the staff was trying to bait and switch anybody at all, especially when, when Robyn did her presentation and were asked questions about this. She was very clear. And, and again, I, I mean, we went through the meeting minutes and if you want to go back through the meeting minutes, you know, I got, I have a reference for you. That at 30 minutes and 12 seconds into that meeting and, and the question was asked, Robyn was very clear that this is one possible scenario, that we don't know what the buyer is going to do. That was in response to questions about it. This was open, honest discussions. And I understand that people can hear what they want to hear. But I'm not sure what else we could have done in, in sort of the context that, that, that we, we found ourselves, sir.
Right, but you are correct. What, what we have is what's in writing and this is all we had that was in writing at the time. So whoever's fault that is, it, it appears that this was presented, this was the expectations. I think there might have been different public discussion and involvement had they have seen the 10 acres back then. But again, I, you know, I, I didn't, I was not aware that you had provided the, the two plots, so.
Yes, sir. And, and again, if you want me, if I have to, I'm happy to, again, I sent it to your counsel. So I'm happy to resend it to you if you want to see Scott's email, but you know.
Fair enough.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, how many members of the public do we have that would like to speak?
I have two residence couples that want to, they want to speak and then one read into the record and another one maybe speak depending on how it goes.
Okay, you want to call the first speaker?
The first speaker is Tom and Kim Gogger.
If you would introduce yourself and give your address as well.
Can I just ask, are there any extras of those?
That was it that I had.
Might there be, I was just wondering if you could, when you refer to, can we have them, make them public?
Put it on the projector?
Okay, yeah.
And if any chance you have an extra copy for Paul? Do you have an extra?
If they don't, that's why I can, I can see.
Okay.
Well, we'll want to get one for the official record, but we've got plenty that can happen in the meeting.
As you talk about it, you can put it on there.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter. My name is Tom Gogger. I live at 14700 Taylor Valley Way in Milton, and that's in the Taylor Glen subdivision, which is immediately adjacent to this planned development. So I just wanted to start out and, and let you know, we're, we're longtime residents here of Milton. We've lived here really since 2001 and we've lived in the area since 1987. We purchased our current home about a year ago and we fell in love with the natural beauty and the, just the, you know, the, the privacy of the area behind our, our property, which abuts what would be face, the proposed phase two. We have a pool and a spa that overlooks the beautiful wooded space and we use this and, and, and that used to belong to Little River Farms. The property line is directly behind our patio and probably, I don't know, I haven't measured it, but 10 or 12 feet from our spa. That's where the property line is. So we prepared some information. I think you all have that in front of you this evening. That, that also includes the five lot plat that was given to us, the letter of intent that was prepared by the council for Little River Farms who just spoke. And also the letter that was sent in advance of the meeting outlining our requests. But first, I really want to thank you and the, and staff for acknowledging some of the, you know, the limitations of the development and recommending that there be at least a 20-foot undisturbed buffer be provided along the north and south property lines in recognition of the reduced front setback and it, excuse me, and in order to preserve some of the existing tree canopy. This requirement was noted would not permit primary or secondary septic fields to be located within this undisturbed buffer. I think that's an important point. The, the, I think without this, the applicant wouldn't be able to develop the properties the, the way they have presented. And it's, so it's no real surprise that they're now talking about, you know, pulling the properties further to the street and away from the back. So requesting another variance to current ordinances. We think this has been really a flawed process and I think we heard some of this kind of play out in the dialogue just now. In May of 2025, we received a letter from the city advising us the application for a use permit by Little River Farms that included the reduction of their land by 16.6 acres that would allow them to sell that portion of their land situated directly behind our home. We expressed interest and concern in the development behind us. We emailed Joe Ivy and his attorney, Rich K., and we communicated frequently with staff here at the city of Milton. We attended a community zoning information meeting that was held back in May. The design review meeting, subsequent meetings thereafter. We actually, we actually missed one because the date of the meeting had been changed and we hadn't been notified of that. So each time we, we were sort of in this process, we felt that we were just being sort of placated. The development will, will, the development will be estate-sized lots and larger homes. And we are given a five lot or five lot plat, which we've, we've talked about, not just once, but twice. And those were emailed directly from Joe. We also, during the community meeting here, were presented with what, what was the five lot plan as well, with staff discussing one of the possibilities. That is the only plan that we ever saw. So you can imagine why residents, ourselves, you know, were, okay, well, this is kind of the direction this is going. Nothing, we are also told that nothing will change in regard to the impact the event facility has on our property. This was also stated in the application for the letter of intent. It was also stated the goal is to maintain the natural beauty of the property as expressed in the letter of intent submitted by the seller, revision of special use permit.
This is the letter of intent, but it's in applicable pages. I don't know how to do this.
Go ahead, don't get it.
They'll flip it.
It'll, it'll, it'll come up, yeah, it takes a minute.
Specific misrepresentations in the letter of intent, which we suspect is also directed by Mr. K. or Mr. Ivy. And varies significantly from what we just heard from them. Here are some of these. Oh, sure. Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to line it up at the same time. I don't think I'm doing a good job of it.
You want to read from here?
We just wanted to read to you this letter of intent because this is what we relied on when we did not oppose the, I guess it's a rezoning of the special use permit. So, you know, they had asked to let go of this section of property and have the special use permit revised based on these representations. Here are some of the things they said in this letter of intent. The proposed revision will not change the impact on neighboring properties. We've highlighted that. Additionally, they said adjacent residential properties and neighborhoods are screened visually by thousands of evergreen and hardwood trees planted on the property by the applicant over the last decade, which have also proved to soften the impact of any sound emanating from the special events held on the property. So then going a page back, we've also highlighted this statement. Applicant has always intended to preserve the nature and character of the property and make it available for the enjoyment of members of the community. Reading a little further on in the letter of intent, references made to page 12 of the comprehensive plan, which states the rural character preservation is affirmed as a top priority of the plan. And then finally, if you go further down, it says our revised footprint exceeds the minimum lot size by over 30 acres, meaning their Little River Farms special event facility, not the, not the property we're talking about. But it says it will include a new significant wooded buffer and screening zone between the property and certain neighboring lots and homes. And then it has in parentheses, the Taylor Road five acre tract. So again and again, we were assured that their intent was to maintain the screening, to make sure we weren't bothered by noise, to keep the rural environment as it was. And then we were presented, granted, there was a disclaimer on that five lot plan. We're not denying that, but that was the plan that we were presented with. And we assumed that since we were supporting them, they wouldn't have to sell the entire tract, but would instead pursue what looked like a pretty agreeable plan. Estate-sized lots, five lots on that property behind us with a special attention paid to tree buffers and screening. So you can understand our concern when things change so dramatically.
My wife, Kim?
Last name Gogger, G-A-U-G-E-R.
So we, we really believe the, that this special use permit, which is, whether you want to say it's part of or not part of, it's actually part of this development plan because it was part of a plan. Plan, you heard it from Rich K. The plan was to sell the land, get money for the, the estate so that certain areas could be provided for and then turn around and develop the, the property and get the, we heard it. The most value, the most value for that property. Unfortunately, that value is coming at the expense of the community, the neighbors, the people who have lived here as long as we have. And, and it's, 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 it's diluting the value of the area that we live in. So we believe that perhaps rescission of the special use permit would be warranted because substantial changes to the tree buffer, noise abatement, natural buffers will substantially impact the land in question and our properties. I, I've sat in my pavilion, I've heard the bands playing. Now, there's two pavilions in Little River. One of them is, is about 1,300 feet away. The other one's 1,800. At 11 o'clock on a Saturday night, I shouldn't have to listen to that. And, but that's the, that's the fact. You know, you don't need to do sound testing. I can tell you. I know when there's a wedding. So we hear this and when the special, when the special use permit application was submitted, Little River Farms owner espoused the benefits of the trees to mitigate sound. Phase two as proposed will worsen the sound abatement. There will be no trees left. Let's be honest. I mean, look at the plat. They have to clear substantial portions in the back for the septic. There's, there's very little side property. You've got a lot of hard surfaces and big houses. There, there won't be any, there won't be any vegetation left. The other, another point I wanted to bring up was about the lot sizes. The difference between phase one and phase two can't be more different. Now, the, the lot sizes themselves are not significantly different, although they are 11% different. The real issue becomes just in the aesthetics. When you drive around phase one, those homes are all have 200 to 260 foot frontages. Every single home in phase two is 150 minimum and there's two, I think, that are 100. So it changes the, the total, you know, when you, when, if you were to drive into phase two, you, it would be like entering into a whole nother space. And now pulling the houses even forward, it doesn't even look like an estate neighborhood. It looks like tract mansions, if you ask me. Phase two is really a rural estate farm, farmland country. The narrow lots in phase two is proposed with large homes, driveways pushed as close as possible to property lines, backyards comprised of 100% sewage treatment facilities. It's not consistent with phase one at all. When I served back in, several years ago, I served on a committee that was responsible for updating the comprehensive land use plan for Milton. Some of you on this committee actually served with me. I don't know if you recall. The mayor was one of them. The, this, this particular proposal would never have been considered under those guidelines. We were, we were concerned about harmonization. Not, not so much within neighborhoods, but within adjacent neighborhoods. Now we've got a situation where you've got a neighborhood with two phases and you've got homes and lots that are very different in their appearance. That can come up? The lot sizes in the proposed plat are also significantly smaller than lots in Taylor Glen that backs up to Little, the Little River Farms. Taylor Glen District, your information was developed about 25 years ago. The lot sizes along the river were significantly larger than the one acres on average. There was, there's no harmony between phase two and the adjacent Taylor Glen development. There's no consistency. The homes in phase two are 42% smaller than the average-sized lots in Taylor Glen. And I can, I've got the data to show, and you can look that up in the public record as well. Another, another point that I would like to raise is development requirements in the UDC. The UDC was, was kind of a, one of the governing or guiding principle documents that we used when we were doing the comprehensive land use plans. It's, it's really a comprehensive document for all codes related to development so that it's all in a single concise, easy-to-understand policy document. The idea is that citizens, contractors, developers, and others can go to one place rather than looking around all over trying to find, what is this ordinance? What is the building code here and there? So it's really been a useful document in shaping the development of Milton. It's, it's really a one-stop shop where you can get everything. The policies are already in place for critical development topics such as tree canopy, noise abatement, and setbacks, et cetera. The city also has been developing and is working on a 2020-40 comprehensive land use plan. And there are other City of Milton ordinance. Apply these equitably to all development proposals. And in my opinion, needs to stop the unjustified variance request of landowners and developers. Variance has come into play, obviously, in many of these developments. And we should allow them in certain situations, but not in the case where individuals, corporations, developers are the sole beneficiaries at the expense of the neighborhood and the community. And I think that's what we feel is going on here. It's not, I have a family. We all worry about the financial health of our family and our, and our children. It's not my problem. And not to be insensitive, but it's not my problem. It's also not the problem of the city or staff to worry about. I got to take care of these, you know, elderly people. Everybody has financial constraints and concerns, and it's your responsibility to figure it out, not somebody else. So although I can understand and I can relate, it's, it's not my, it's not my problem. So kind of in closing, but the proposed phase two site plan completely misses the target, in my opinion. And I would just urge that all stakeholders to this go back to the drawing board and devise a more responsible and appropriate plan. We submitted a letter to the planning commission in preparation of the meeting. Letter outlines our requests. You have that with you now. In addition to reconsideration of the special use permit for Little River Farms, if this development is permitted. Because like I said before, I believe that now knowing what we know now and wanting to plan a 10-lot neighborhood, it changes everything. Tree canopy, noise, I've already got a noise problem. This is going to be worse. I can assure you. So our requests are really simple. Deferred decision on the proposed plat until the city officials can conduct a site visit with Taylor Glen neighbors and be able to view the, the, the river basin area, the watershed of Little River corridor. We'd like for consideration of large lot incentives. Never been discussed in any of the hearings that we were at. I know that's out there. I know it's, it's constantly being sort of massaged by the city. I follow it. What, what opportunities are there to assist with that? That, that was a topic that was actually on the agenda earlier and then was removed from this agenda today. We would require that a tree buffer or landscape buffer mature trees of 25 feet to provide privacy and noise abatement. Adhere to the UDC development requirements and city ordinances with attention paid to sections 11.1.3. Priority areas on properties with development activity for tree conservation and planting are rural view sheds, state water, and zoning buffers. We're asking for an approved tree canopy plan for the entire site as a condition of the development permit as set forth in 11.1.3(c). And let that be prepared by a licensed professional that includes drawings to scale, tree surveys, tree protection plan, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of generalities were presented by the applicant. No specifics. I don't know how you approve anything without detail. So to me, it's just words, and it sounds good, but we're talking about making a decision on a development. We've already gotten burned by that in the special use permit hearing. Consideration of revised special use permit for Little River Farms based on misrepresentations in the application and letter of intent submitted by Ivy and Little River Farms. We'd ask that you adhere to comprehensive land plan, view shed, and rural development requirements. Require consistent lot sizes so that they're consistent with neighboring lot sizes in Little River and Taylor Glen so there's space to accommodate septic field lines and tree buffers. And we don't have to bend the rules and issue variances. There's nothing wrong with that land. It doesn't present a public safety issue. There's no reason to issue variances. Evaluate the environmental impact on Little River. If all the land in this tract is cleared, you know what's going to happen. We're going to have erosion. We're going to have sedimentation flowing into the river basin. Maintenance and maintenance will be an issue. And it's our recommendation that a maintenance and performance bond for the retention pond and river for its ensuring long-term care be put in place. We know that Norton Overlook, which is across the county line, we know that there were problems over there. Many of them were reported involving sedimentation and erosion during and after construction. Require that they propose that maintenance and performance bond is obligated to construct and maintain water damage plan, detention, retention pond, and erosion and flooding issues to do not impact Little River. I think it, I think it's prudent also that, given all the constraints of the site, 10 lots is probably too many. Reduce the number of lots on the plat back to five, which was what was presented, as was proposed initially in order to maintain the existing buffers, consistency, environmental protections, noise abatement, and et cetera. I think the other thing is allow adjacent neighbors to participate in the process, keeping us informed of meeting schedules and dates. Things are changing. We're all, we all lead busy lives. I myself had booked a trip to be in Chicago for three days this week, about three weeks ago. This came up and I had to cancel. I mean, this thing has moved through in a rapid pace like I've never seen before. We understand that property owners and developers have a right to develop their land. We just ask that the city also understand that we, as homeowners and property owners, we have a right as well to undisturbed and peaceful use or quiet enjoyment of our property, to maintain the value of our homes, to enjoy the natural beauty of the area, preserve the unique and rural feel of Milton. Concluding, I'll just say this particular area of Milton is one of the last places where there's land to develop. We know that land is becoming a premium, that decisions are made here and become precedent for upcoming developments up and down Taylor Road and elsewhere. The same developers who are making millions of dollars on these homes will be watching and waiting to make their next move, and they're watching you. We've lived in Milton a long time. This is not our first sort of challenge to development here. We should not have to fight again and again to maintain this rural nature of our beautiful community and to get authorities to enforce the policies that are already in place and protect those who have already made an investment in Milton. We're asking the city to stop favoring development over long-term residents. Stop developers from diluting the value of our properties, complicating a process that makes it challenging to understand the plans and intentions of the applicant and protect the natural environment that's made Milton a special place to live. So you have copies of this and what our asks are of you. Again, I appreciate your time. I appreciate your attention to this matter. It matters to us and many other residents. And we just would ask that you take this under full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
The next speaker is Lisa B. Miller, B. Miller.
If you could both state your name and address for the.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Lisa B. Miller.
I'm George B. Miller.
And we live at 14708 Taylor Valley Way in Taylor Glen subdivision. We have resided there for almost 12 and a half years. I want to thank Kim and Tom Gauger for all their time and hard work they have put into their presentation this evening. I, I'm, I'm so impressed because they have touched on every thing I've been thinking or wanting to say, and they went and they did the research and they looked because this neighborhood that they're proposing is nothing like our neighborhood or even the front of what they're going back. Our backyard also abuts to the property that is being proposed for development. It is a beautiful wooded piece of property that has a natural steep drainage ditch that empties into Little River. We had heard a rumor about a year and a half ago that they had planned to put five estate lots there. At the May 27th meeting, it was alluded again, which talked about it before, only five lots were going to build there. Now, what happened there? I don't know. But it really insults me when you sit there and say it doesn't matter. It does matter. There's a huge difference, especially on this piece of property, and I wish all of you, anyone, city, everyone, anyone making a decision to come and actually look at this piece of property that they are putting these five, well, actually on my side, five, and five on the other side. It's unbelievable. Anyways, so as much as it pained us because we thought, oh, five lots, all right. We saw no reason to object to that parcel of land being removed from Little River Event Vineyard, nor the Christmas tree lot on the corner of Batesville and Taylor Road be added in order to keep the required minimum acreage needed for its rural event use permit. But when my husband and I saw the plans to build 10 homes arranged like tract homes and required to move almost all the trees except for a few specimen trees, we were beyond disbelief. We felt duped. I know, I know you all have our letter that we submitted last Thursday. At the time, we had very little time to judge this all and process what this plat means for us, the City of Milton, and our surrounding neighbors in order to get it submitted by the deadline last Thursday. I might also add, it was not easy to get information to even be able to make a valid argument. This plat reminds me of English class where you had to write a five paragraph essay in class. You wrote it, and when you handed the teacher the paper, they took it from you and started marking it with their red pen. Then they handed it back to you and said, you can do better. I'm not accepting this. I know this is not how this process works in Milton because Chatham has their lawyers and they are within their legal right to develop it. But when Chatham submitted this initial plat to the City of Milton Community Development Staff, that staff should have put a red X over the septic fields that are along the property lines and on the opposite side of a drainage and, and the houses. And a big red X, big, I can't even speak anymore. I'm upset. A big red X over the retaining pond situated below, right near the Little River. What in the world is going to happen if this pond overflows? Where does all this water go? And don't tell us it will never overflow. Ask the people even in Appalachia. You don't know what water does. How does that affect our neighbors downstream? And who do you think they are going to sue and blame if this ever occurs? Chatham will be saying, not our fault. Milton approved it. Do you know where the nearest retention pond near us in Taylor Glen is? I'll tell you. Across the street from the homes that are on the river, situated in a natural drainage ditch that was already there. It is, it is quite a distance from the river. I don't think they did it just to make a pretty subdivision. I think they developed it that way because they had a respect for both nature and the river and what they are capable of. We strongly urge the City of Milton to not treat this as a dispute about development on one small piece of property along the river. There is a much larger piece of property undeveloped along the Little River and river's edge off Taylor Road. We have no doubt whoever is planning to develop that land is watching very closely to what the City of Milton allows here. My husband and I both spoke in support of Little River Farms when they first applied for their rural event use permit because we did not want to see another subdivision built and the woods was part of the venue. And by the way, there were many against it, especially Belmont subdivision. We are pleased that the City of Milton Community Development Staff had asked for a 20-foot undisturbed tree buffer on both the north and south sides. We would like to see that expanded to 25 feet in helping them adhere to the Unified Development Code requiring the minimum tree canopy cover of 57% and give us a little more privacy. We find it unbelievable that Little River Farms' most recent application for their rural event usage permit referenced how they had added trees to buffer the noise for neighbors, how this change would not really affect any of their neighbors. And yet they removed and sold a wooded property which the majority of trees that serve as our sound buffer from Little River Farms and Batesville Road will be removed. We moved to Milton because supposedly they were trying to preserve its rural character. One would think preserving trees and existing woods would be part of that plan. Milton does not, I mean, Milton does have laws that were meant to help preserve the rural feel of Milton. It seems the old landowners, developers, and builders have decided that every piece of property should be developed and are developing maybe within the rules, but totally disregarding the spirit these rules were intended to achieve. Just because we're the only ones that are going to have to look at this change that embodies nothing that makes Milton Milton does not make it okay. Milton does not have much undeveloped land remaining. Perhaps when a wooded lot needs to be totally clear-cut and drastically alter the topography to maximize the number of lots to make a profit, that land should not be developed. We invite any of you, and I guess I invited before, but I think you really do need to see this piece of property. And if I'm not home, just walk back there. Because I don't think a piece of paper really shows you what they're trying to do. And also notice where the houses in our neighborhood are from the river and where they're going to put houses to the river. Unbelievable. Okay. We can't even understand how it is going to be done with the steep wooded topography there and situated along the river. And as you drive to our house, we are at the back of the neighborhood. Notice how Taylor Glen was developed 20, over 20 years ago. Notice how Taylor Glen was developed twenty, over twenty years ago. All the natural drainage ditches with woods were left. There are long expanses of woods between homes and the Little River. This is what we naively thought was meant when Milton said they wanted to keep the rural feel. It saddens us that this is not the case anymore. You know, the first time I came to this area was in nineteen seventy-nine. I was fifteen years old. My parents bought a four-year-old Chatham-built house in unincorporated Fulton County. I went to the old Milton High School for a year before we were incorporated into Roswell. I voted for the first time in nineteen eighty-two, right here in Crab Apple, when it was just an intersection. I married my husband and spent the next twenty years while he served on active duty in the Air Force. And after he retired, he brought me back to this area, and we chose Milton because of its rural feel, and they said they were trying to preserve that feel. We saw how Alpharetta and Roswell had developed over the years as we visited my parents in Roswell and my sisters who remain in this area. We hope you agree this proposed subdivision is not the type of development we want for Milton. Thank you for allowing us to voice our concerns and for all you do for Milton.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
The next speaker is Mark Sanfrotello.
Good evening. Good evening. Again, Mark Sanfrotello. I live at three hundred BlackBerry Ridge Trail in Phase One of Little River Estates. And I'll keep my comments brief, both because I think neighbors that I've had the opportunity to listen to are very well-prepared and have addressed issues that I'm not certainly in a position to address here for you this evening. I do think it's worthwhile to add my voice, however, to what we see as a real change to what this plan was for the development. I don't begrudge any development or owner from seeking to generate a return on their investment. And I know it's not the role of this commission to worry about property value, my property value individually. But I do think it's the role of the commission to ensure consistency in how the Milton area is developed. And this would be a very obvious mistake. It would be completely inconsistent with the phase that already exists. And on that basis, primarily on that basis alone, I can tell you that it's a mistake, and I would implore the commission to at least delay this vote, to reconsider. I will add an additional factor here that I do think is important to consider. As someone who lives, has lived there for two years and has commuted two to three times a week, exiting Batesville Road has already become a full-time job. And I've already seen instances where drivers have, because I'm sure they're nervous about getting to work on time, taking significant risk getting onto Birmingham Highway. It's possible to consider fewer lots and fewer homes on this property as insignificant related to, you know, the larger traffic issue that now exists. But I would suggest to you that is the definition of a death of a thousand cuts, and every little bit does matter. Moving homes down with two to three vehicles per home does matter and will matter as it relates to the traffic patterns and the safety of the people that live in this area. And I will just tell you finally that I lived here for a period of nine years. I lived off of Birmingham Highway, working for Coca-Cola and commuting downtown in the early nineties. And I came back because of what Milton is and just the incredible lifestyle and the development that you all have really planned and controlled. I would ask that you please not approve something that's inconsistent with what Milton is and has been and have a development that just looks like two developments in one. Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Next speaker?
The next one will be read into the record, Ms. Amy Matthews at one four six Taylor Ridge Way. She states, I am in opposition to the current proposed plat of Little River Farms Phase Two. Does Mr. Dan Skinner want to speak?
Thank you for hearing me out. My name is Dan Skinner. I live at two twenty BlackBerry Ridge Trail, which is in Phase One of Little River. And when we, my wife and I moved from Buckhead to retire, and we were told when we bought the house from the developer that they were going to build five houses in that section. We were told that's what they're going to do, and I expect that's what they should do, is build five houses. But ten is ridiculous. That plat looks like a cluster home community that's, you know, people in our phase have spent, you know, two and a half to over three million dollars on these houses, and you're getting this. If they can't build their houses like that would at least go with what's in Phase One, and I'm talking about setbacks from front to door to the width of the property, you know, it just doesn't go. Just, you know, tell Ivy to sell them a back road and have their own subdivision. But don't come through ours. We only have one gate to get in. So, you know, it's already tight. And I will also admit the traffic is horrendous. I don't know where they're coming from, but to get from Batesville to Birmingham, you need a roundabout at least. We can hardly get out on the Birmingham. So anyway, just please hear all of these people and tell them to, if you're going to build it, build like in Phase One. That's all I request. Thank you.
That is all the comments.
Does the applicant want to present a rebuttal or closing statement?
My only comment is that the preliminary plat for you with the existing setbacks is compliant and can be developed in that manner. We are only proposing the potential for asking for a variance because in our opinion, it would enhance the development by increasing the rear setback and provide more cover for the adjoining properties. So it is not dependent in any form and or fashion upon changing the building setback lines. We thought we were enhancing the product by increasing the area between the proposed houses and the adjoining property lines. But in any and or fashion, it is not a requirement. The plat has the original building setback lines depicted in the darker color and everything that we would be proposing. It is not our intent to design based upon variance request. We just thought it would make a better product. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to just address a couple of the comments because I think they're directed against us. First of all, I think that the two people from Taylor Glen, they're on a one-acre lot, one point one, one point two.
You need to address the.
Yeah, I think they're on one point one and one point two acres, so I just wanted to make that clear. So very, very similar that they're complaining about the acreage of what we have, but they live on a little over one acre. Second of all, whether we put five lots on there or ten lots, the setbacks are going to be the same, and they're going to go all the way down to their jacuzzi or whatever, regardless of how many lots we put on there. There was also the representation that we were adding additional buffer for sound. That's true. We actually planted a tree farm along Taylor Road. And so that gave an additional buffer to the closest neighborhood, which is Belmont. Belmont subdivision is the only one that's ever, back in the beginning, ever brought the noise to our attention that they thought that might be an issue. So by including that, we gave that additional buffer of those trees. We added, we didn't have to, but we did. With respect to the southern borderline, for us, we've got a hundred feet of trees there. So for us, we don't need any shortage of the setback or buffer. We've got a hundred feet of trees. So we're fine with that. We don't need that. Because I think one of the comments was they want an extended buffer in the north and the south. We're on the south. We don't require, desire it, or want it. Thank you very much.
Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant, the speakers, or staff regarding the submittal? I have one for Scott. Actually, a couple. Can you give me more information on what I think is what I call the long rectangular DE, twenty feet DE, which I think are a drainage?
Drainage easement.
Drainage easement?
So in comparing the preliminary plat, there is a natural drainage easement, or I'm sorry, drainage way. There's a slight indentation in the contour lines, meaning that's where the water has found its path of least resistance. So without doing any detailed hydrology study, we're just showing this, we're bringing into knowledge or acknowledging the fact that there is water flowing there now that will have to be addressed at the time of individual site plans. That will not be fully determined until those individual plans are in there. But there is water flowing there now, and we have to work around that. So it's, but it.
And what are the possible solutions for addressing?
Well, it would be when you build the house, you would change the grading and put the water in a different direction, either through piping or through a man-made swell. And, you know, divert, I guess is the word we use. But that would be based upon, you know, the amount of impervious area created with a new lot. The grading, are they going to have a basement access from the rear or from a well to the side? All of that will be determined at that time. But it's, there is, the water is naturally flowing in that direction. So it's.
You know, so I've seen it. In my neighborhood, we have had to deal with it. We've had situations where twenty-five-inch buried conduit was put in. We've had somebody put a dry, what did you call it, dry creek bed, big rocks.
Yeah, that, we know that, I mean, there is, and it's kind of a a self-imposed red flag to Jerry Overholz, or that we know there's water going there. The last thing we want is to try to cover up anything. He would notice the same thing we did in indentation in those contour lines.
Right, because if I can read the light print, it looks like there's about a hundred change, a hundred-foot decrease in grade from the upper northeast corner to the lower southwest.
Well, you have a large gradient on Little River, which is, as I'm sure you're aware, the large drainage area in the city of Milton. But the, what, for lack of a better term, the buildable area, that is on the less the lesser gradient in there, so.
A couple of things on some specific lots. Lot five, which is on the cul-de-sac on the north side, is right against that natural drain currently, and not a lot of room to move it if you're still going to get to this stormwater retention pond.
So when we develop our, when those lots are developed and graded and reconfigured, then the water that's coming from the very northwestern corner, as it's diverted out, then that drainage easement, as you can imagine, or drainage way for, because there is no easement at that time, would be affected. So we're taking, we would take water away from it on each of those lots as you went from this low point higher and higher. So that would be handled. Dilution is the solution, so.
You know, it just, to me, makes what could be a very desirable lot because it's larger as a perspective moment, or makes it less desirable because of dealing with everybody else's.
Well, what you're going to do, or what would probably happen is you would put a pipe in at that property line, catch that water, run it to the street, intersect the MS four storm drainage system in the street, and pipe it straight into the pond.
So more like you do on the south side?
It would be the same. I mean, that's the way every subdivision is handled, every commercial development. You take and intercept the waterway and put it in a pipe and divert it and put it into the detention pond.
And I think you, and I appreciate that you earlier said that you laid this out with the idea of this is kind of the most you could put on.
That is.
Twenty-five percent impervious?
Yes, ma'am.
And looking at lot six, that means they get a one-car garage. Because the driveway only extends to like one car garage.
Well, that, so.
So that probably is.
Well, inside that, so that large rectangle that represents a house, so there would be garages inside that large rectangle. So maybe I'm missing your point.
The driveway only extends to the front of the house, about the size of one car garage. Whereas the rest of them show like obviously more of a extension to allow for a three-car garage.
I mean, I promise you, it would not be built with a one-car garage.
It just seems between what we're having, what you're having to do to sandwich five in there with the drainage and also to in looking at the south side versus the north side, and while I realize the north side does meet, two lots do meet the hundred and fifty feet, the south side is a hundred and sixty feet or larger. And so to me, it seems like less houses on the north would be more in keeping with the width and maybe even fewer to keep with what you see as you're coming in, which I remarked when I pulled in, I came to the edge of the property because I wanted to get a sense of the topography and the tree cover, is the lots were remarkably wide and remarkably pleasantly wide, where this looks more, yes, it's a hundred and fifty feet, but they seem like they're more like three hundred feet in some cases.
And that is a direct result of they have the minimum depth. They were designed based upon the existing footprint of the property that the Ivy's owned. At that time, the requirement was one hundred feet of width. But due to the fact that they are extremely shallow, those on the existing on the north, they had to have extended width.
And then just a minor point. When you're looking at it, lot eight shows everything as primary septic and doesn't show half of it as.
That is a, but that's a typo, and I apologize in advance that, or in retrospect, that you had to see that. But I promise you, it is a national reserve.
Yep. I don't know if this is a, thank you. I don't know if this is a question. Yep. I don't know if this is a, thank you. I don't know if this is a question for Robin or since Sandra's here. There is a lot of, if we look at it, a lot of trees on this property. Can you refresh us on what the requirements are for, given the amount of trees that will probably have to be removed? What, what they have to replant?
Well, so the tree ordinance, as stated earlier, does have the minimum canopy coverage requirement of fifty-seven percent for AG one lots, less than one and a half acres. And of that fifty-seven percent minimum requirement, a third of it does need to come from existing trees to remain. So I think with the proposed twenty-foot landscape strip and some of the buffer area constraints that they have, I think they'll be able to do all that. They're obviously going to have to replant trees. And we do require street tree plantings with all new street developments. So they will have street trees and they will probably have replacement trees as well.
Given that the current preliminary plan does not have that twenty-five foot buffer because it has septic in that buffer, how would, with the plat in front of us, how would they meet the fifty-seven percent and the replanting requirements?
Well, as I think the applicant stated, a lot of this is conceptual. And they'll be getting into the meat of that, kind of when they get into the hydro study and they dig deeper into where the septics are going. And, you know, as mentioned, there's the primary septic and then a secondary septic. So typically the secondary septic is not cleared until absolutely needed. And when they come in for the LDP, we do restrict clearing limits to just the road and infrastructure only. And then they kind of come and do each, each lot as they go.
Given that they'll also have to clear a significant amount of trees for the stormwater management, where could they plant, replant trees if they had to?
Well, on the stormwater, and Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, but they will have to have a ten-foot access easement around that pond. And then they will also have to have a twenty-foot landscape strip around there. So they will, and as mentioned before, this is conceptual. So what is shown on there may not be as big as what they need.
I know we, we've been coached before to look at the trees as we're looking at the preliminary plots, because later it's come back and it's like, oh, no, you can't build that because you can't meet your tree requirements. So I guess I'm just concerned that, given what is in front of us, which is what we have to consider, that it would be very difficult for them to meet our tree, tree coverage requirements.
Judy, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Along those same lines, I mean, it seems like everything, like Scott was saying, the, the houses are kind of cookie cutter. The septic systems, its place, I think, topographically, it's going to be challenging to put it where it is. The drainage easements are conceptual. I know Scott said that it follows existing drainage patterns, but on the south, the drainage easements run in parallel to the contour, so it's not. And then you've got the drainage easement or the drainage draw going through the house shown on lot five. So there, it's like everything is so conceptual, I'm not sure what we're really looking at here. To me, it doesn't look like you have fifty-seven percent of the lot available to, to do any planting. When you take into account the houses that are shown, which is what we have to look at, the septic system, the storm system, the road system. I, I don't think you can, to me, this doesn't appear to be a workable layout.
If, if I can jump in for a minute, the houses that are shown, they're, they're not proposing that these are the houses to be built. You're not approving these houses to be built. You're not approving any of the structures or locations of the structures. It's the lots that are out there.
And so I understand that everything, and that's, I guess, my point, is that everything on here is conceptual. I don't know what it is that we are approved.
I have a fundamental question when, when, I, I totally agree with everything you said. I have a more fundamental question for, for council. For the record, I was not in attendance at the meeting when the special use permit was recommended for approval based on what's in this letter of intent, right? It's my question for council, if you could help us understand, how binding is this letter of intent when it says specifically that the applicant will not change the impact on neighboring properties and is in fact touting the fact that thousands of evergreens and hardwood trees have been planted on the property?
Sure. Let, let me start by saying all of that was based on a special use permit for different property. It was not based on this property. The approval of the special use permit could not place a requirement on this parcel because it was not part of the application for that special use permit. In turn, this application, well, this subdivision plat, preliminary plat approval is not tied to that special use permit. I understand that they're next to each other, there's a correlation as to.
I probably would have understood that if I'd have been able to. That's helpful.
So understandable. So, but those discussions, whatever may have happened with respect to that, are more related to the special use permit as opposed to
Or the operation.
The use of this potential property. Right.
I think if we nip this down to what we really have in front of us and what we're really talking about here tonight is we've got a preliminary plat, which is all by right. Okay. You know, so that they could go ahead and build that. Nobody likes that. Nobody wants that. Nobody likes it. So we've got that on one side and the other side is, oh, maybe five lots over here. I don't think that's going to happen. I think what we have to do is how do we mitigate or how do we make this plat most acceptable? One of those things they talked about is moving the houses forward. That makes it better. Does that make it great? No.
But that would require a variance.
Right. Which, which, but again, I think. But I think everybody would go for the variance because it's helping out. It's, it's improving the issues that the neighbors have brought.
Yeah. And I would ask the more fundamental question around where Vic and I were going that says, if the preliminary plat does not have a feasible way to do fifty-seven percent tree canopy, because of some of the unique requirements of Little River and the, and, and the stormwater retention, is it really by right? Because it's by right if it can make fifty-seven percent tree canopy.
Correct. But again, if he would have shown, as Scott said initially, if he would have shown a thirty by forty cottage here, they could have done that. So I think we're getting down the weeds when this is just saying, we're, we're not approving location of, of anything. We're just saying, okay, by right, this is what he could come in and do. And this is what they're thinking about. This is, you know, in some ways, no more binding than the, you know, the, the five acre parcels, the three, you know, the, the five, the three, the five, three acre parcels. It's, it's still a preliminary plot.
Yeah. But if they had less roost tops and less driveway, it would be easier to make fifty, fifty-seven.
I mean, this is a guess. This is, this is somebody's guess right now. So we're not, we're not doing that. What we're saying is, can they make, can they put homes, can they put, can they make one point two acre lots? Which is what, what most of them are, some are a little larger, but the smallest one, I mean.
And they're not seeking a variance.
Right. And they're not seeing, it's the only, right. So they could, they could go ahead and say, there's nothing, I don't, I don't think there's anything unfortunate the city can do to, to change this. Yeah, at, at this point. You know, if they come back and say, oh, well, now I wonder this, this is, this is the house I'm putting. That's when I think the calculations are done of how much is impervious, what are the trees? Where, you know, where does that, where does that go? I think our job is to try, how do we massage or how do we make this any more acceptable to the neighbors? Is there anything we can do at this point of saying, yeah, let's move the houses up? That'll, that'll give you more buffer between the, the houses. Can we say, you know, they, they've already identified that they planted trees in the past, you know, to soften the impact of any sound emanating from the special events? Is that something we could condition saying, yeah, we, you know, we, we really can't recommend this approval because it's by law? You know, can we say, we recommend approval of this with these conditions? One is we move the, the houses up to forty feet of, of the front setback. We require or we strongly request or suggest putting, you know, the evergreens and hardwoods on the, you know, on the adjacent residential property neighborhoods and things like that. Again, I don't, I don't think it's our job to design this and determine where things go. But how do we make this the best possible for for, for the neighbors?
Prevent what we have sometimes seen in this case where we look at a preliminary and the next thing you know, we've got a tree variance and a impervious variance because there's not enough room for a pool.
They could, they could, they could always come back with variances, no matter what we decide today. They could ask them back with variances because they want to, you know, tennis court or, you know, maybe that's not a good example. But they could always come back and ask for variances. We can't do anything about that.
Robin, are, are you able to confirm that there was a variance given for one of the phase one lots to go to forty setback?
If you give me three minutes, I can, I do believe there's a variance, but I'll give you the exact what was requested and.
But even, yeah, even if there is, I don't, I don't, because again, this is, people aren't going to be driving by and looking at this. This is going to be self-contained. They're only going to be going there to see that. So if we, you know, if we had these ten feet off the road, that's not going to affect anybody but the people who live here.
Correct.
So again, I'm, I'm more, how do we move as much, you know? And again, we, we can't demand it, we can't require it, but we can strongly suggest moving everything up and we can, you know, I would vote in a heartbeat to move it up to ten feet in a variant.
I would too.
Yeah. So, but.
If we have, if we have precedent of that before, and we've done it, yeah.
Robin, refresh me. Don't we have a CZIM meeting next week where we start the process about flipping back and front?
That is correct.
In a matter of short time, that may not need a variance. It might be the new law.
So I can give information and also for the applicant. If they were to seek a variance, the soonest a decision could be made, those type of variances for all the lots go directly to the city council versus the BZA. And in order to meet the ZPL and our zoning requirements of thirty days notice in the paper, it would be a final date of December fifteenth. So keep that in mind if that's what the applicant wants to do. Versus the process for the text amendment is CZIM next week. It'll be heard before the planning commission in November. And then the first meeting in January would be, if everything tracks, would be the first meeting in January to the city council for a text amendment. Currently, we're proposing the flip flop of the fifty to sixty. So just.
The I, I'm with you that says especially on the north side, since that seems to be where the concerns, existing neighbor concerns are. And is making sure they are able to pull the septic and preserve the natural tree buffer and if possible, even build some, a natural additional buffer of evergreens there. I also would encourage, just because I feel five is kind of squished in against a possible natural drainage easement, that they consider reducing the number of homes on the north side. Just to make it more compatible with south, they'd all be about this, a little bit wider. And also five wouldn't have to get jammed up against a drainage, a natural drainage easement. But somehow, and then also too, to make sure that before it gets too far along, that we make sure they can make the fifty-seven percent on the trees.
Yeah, that's the, I'm assuming staff will do their job.
Well, but it's a timing thing. Sometimes the trees get done later rather than sooner. I think in this case, it needs to be sooner rather than later.
So I have, excuse me. Commissioner McNeese, for the variance on three fifteen Blackberry Ridge Trail, which is the lot that Mr. Reese referred to. It was approved to allow a proposed single family home to encroach the sixty-foot front setback requirement by nine feet. So in all intents and ten feet.
Could, can we take any more comments from the public?
No, we have not received some questions. No new comments, but if you have questions, that's up to you.
Can I, can I just maybe, this is maybe clarity for myself as a commissioner? And as a resident of Milton, there's nothing worse than having a bunch of houses put into a beautiful piece of property. And as commissioners, we hear the citizens come up and complain about where the deer are going to go, where's the water going to go and all that stuff. And I completely agree. I bought a big piece of property on Doris Road and I don't have any neighbors nearby and I've got a giant, giant buffer around my house to solve for all the problems that we have tonight. It's only through the blessing of being able to afford a big piece of property that I could do that. So now it's, we have to rely on the laws that try to protect us as citizens. This is not the law creation body. And so at the end of the day, if the laws are followed, our role really, and I'm asking, this is kind of a question, but our role isn't to build the laws or create the laws, it's to make sure they're being followed. And just real rough shot on this plan that Scott's provided, it's not breaking any laws. It's okay to be done. So really it comes down to appealing to, like working with the developer to figure out, like, how can you work together to make things work better? And that's the sense that I have right now. And it's, it's frustrating as commissioners, we see you guys come in and say, please don't approve this because of the deer and because our backyard will look different. We don't really have much control over that because the laws are the laws. And then you get into the things like, well, maybe we should have bigger minimum lot sizes. Well, we already have one of the biggest minimum lot sizes of any city around us, an acre minimum. That's pretty amazing. But we still all want the rural feel. And if every one acre parcel or had a house on it, it wouldn't feel rural anymore. But if we also said every house had to be on three acres, that would have a, another kind of domino effect. So I just want to point out that we struggle with you recognizing that we would rather have a rural environment. And there are also many situations, just like the family. Sometimes they can't even afford to pay the taxes on the land anymore because it's a, it's an error. So they've got to sell the land and they've got to sell it for the biggest, you know, the best use. So I don't know, there's no great solution. I think what you're hearing here is that we're trying to figure out like, how can we make the best thing work out of a not great situation? And I know Scott personally, he's a, a great man, loves his family. He does great work. I think he has arrows in his back all the time up here. He's trying to do right by you guys, even by presenting something that is not necessarily in their best interest, but would maybe make things better. So I may have misread some of that, but I, I personally feel conflicted all the time because I wish we could do more to help. And the best we can do is say no, because something doesn't work according to the code. And so we desperately look for things that don't work in the code that we don't think will work and we try to figure those out. But if the builder or the developer comes back and says, we've solved for that, the draining is, drainage is right, the tree canopy is right. We're following all the codes. There's nothing that can be done. And the simple solution would be wave the, the money wand. Go to Mr. Key and say, hey, don't sell it to Chatham, sell it to the group of us who all put our money into a fund so we could have trees and a park and all those things. It's a free market. You should call Mr. Chatham. I mean, I can tell you personally, we, we have gone to a developer and said, we'll pay you more than you paid for the land to make you whole on what you would make if you developed the land. So, you know, you're paying three hundred and fifty thousand an acre. Is it worth it? I don't know. Maybe. So I don't know. I, I would just encourage you to maybe talk to Chatham. He also is a good man, but he also has a business to run. So I, I don't know if that rings true for you guys, but I am constantly conflicted by feeling your pain, both on the side of Scott, who's just trying to do his job, but also on the side of the residents who really want their backyard to stay like it was. And so. What? Okay. What did I miss? I'm sorry.
Judy, we need to get this in the.
Yeah.
If, if you want to ask a question.
Yeah.
Direct something to someone.
Okay.
Anybody, you know, we've, we've heard. Anybody, you know, we've, we've heard some discussion about the tree canopy, the hydrology study to understand this drainage solution. I've raised a concern that perhaps the number of houses along the north end might be one too many. A desire for possibly recommending some additional, any other points anybody else would like to ask or clarify?
I, I would like to hear from Mr., apologies if I mispronounced your name, Mr. Gauger? Doug Gauger. If you feel like we missed something, will, will you please let us know what, what you believe we missed?
Well, I think, I think it's, it's pretty obvious. I think there's some, some issues that need to be addressed. You've, you've already brought them up, the tree canopy. That, I don't know if I heard noise abatement, but if I can sit in my backyard and I can hear the music loud and clear coming from Little River Farms, that's a problem. That's a violation. That's a UDC violation. I shouldn't, I shouldn't hear that from 2,000 feet away. And, and, and now you're wanting to authorize removal of all, virtually all the trees? This, this situation is going to get worse. I said that before. Well, I don't know if I need to be more clear about it, but that's, you want a violation? It's not, I mean, yeah, we care about the deer and the fish and all those things. But this is about, this is about the UDC code. This is about laws that you have, that we have to abide by. I'm not appealing to the deer and the birds and all that. They'll find another place. But I can't make the sound go away. I can't put up a noise barrier in my yard. You can protect us though from that. Right? It's a clear violation.
What is, what is the noise ordinance on Little River? I know we discussed 45 at the property line at one point. What ended up getting passed?
Yes, I pulled it up. It's a little complicated. But first, before I review it, I would encourage you, we have a system called C Click Fix. And or to call, actually more appropriately, because it's, we're not here, is to call the police department. And I know that sounds really dramatic, but that's really the only way we can, hopefully, if there are complaints, to help enforce what the noise ordinance is. So up to this point, we have not heard of complaints and it's, it's complaint-driven. So I encourage you to let us know when that occurs so we can address that, so.
Okay.
Fine. More thing, just is, this hearing and the consideration is not about violations by the, the special event facility on a different property. So that's not anything we can address.
That's something.
No, but the use per.
To abate the noise, they could put a buffer on the north end of their property.
Right. But, but the use permit for those hearings, the, the sound abatement was a big issue. It, it, I think, I think Judy, you brought this up. It was talked about extensively and we got into decibel levels and all kinds of technical stuff that frankly makes no sense. All you have to do is sit in my pavilion on a Saturday night or a Friday night and you'll hear it. You don't need to be an audio engineer to figure it out. It's disturbing. It's a violation of the law. So do something about it. End of story. I mean, you, we want to apply laws. I'm not here to protect the deer. This is about applying law.
Having been personally affected by noise, you have to, noise is in the, sound is in the eye of the beholder and you have to complain for them to come out and measure. And they will come, they have a decibel meter and will.
But recognize that the use permit was, was, the special use permit was granted based on a five, a five-lot plat, that the sound would be taken care of because trees matter and it will absorb all the sound and buffer you. And now we have a plan that says, most of the trees are going to be gone. We're going to put 10 homes up there. And the, in the situation, the sound issue is going to become even worse. And we may even have a drainage issue. And, and there's been a lot of, I'm an engineer, okay? We don't deal in hypothesis and well conceptualized. No, it's about data. It's about fact. Don't, we, we've already been hoodwinked by words on a piece of paper from the letter of intent. We don't need to do this again. So I, again, I'm encouraging you, understand what, what's at stake here. And it's not deer and birds and eagles.
Thank you, Mr. Gauger.
Thank you. Yep. But I would encourage you to report, report that. Any other questions for staff, for applicant, for any of the speakers? No, and we can ask you, but. Any other questions? Do you feel comfortable enough?
I'd like to hear your question. Yeah, I have a question. What's your question?
Yeah. Getting around the rules.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak again. With respect, Mr. James, I, I know that you're, you're in a, a position of inherent conflict between, as you call it, you know, the, the, the desires of a developer call it and the, and the, the needs of the community and the desires of homeowners. And you have to apply the law. You don't make the law. Get it? And that makes perfect sense to me. But to me, it, it's been said several times that a conceptual plan has been presented to the commission. A reasonable judgment looking at that plan is that it won't meet, it won't, it won't allow a developer to meet the 57% canopy regular, uh, requirement. And, and where does the judgment of this group come in on a scenario where it doesn't seem reasonable? That even if you said, okay, to proceed today, that you, you, you would, you would, the, the, the developer wouldn't be in a position to meet that requirement. That's my question.
Yeah. What, what, what we do in the case of preliminary plots is recommend to the community development director generally, here's what we think you should look at, here's what we think you should consider, here's what we want you to do. So we make recommendations, which will be the next subject we get to, on kind of what recommendations we want to make.
I, I need a civics lesson in addition to.
Oh, yeah, it took us a while.
Thank you, thank you for your question.
But thank you for your question. Any other questions? Otherwise I will close public comment. I'm willing to try a motion or, and then we can have discussion and I'll probably withdraw it and try it again.
Let's do it.
Give it a whirl. I'd like to make a motion that we request the community development director to consider alternatives for septic in the backlog, primary septic in the backlot setback, to review the drainage plan and to vet the feasibility of a 57% canopy before further motion, further action is taken by her on this plat. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, I, I, I would suggest we also look at creating a variance to move the houses up to the 40-foot setback in the front. That's the least we could do. And also look into providing some type of screening along the north.
Screening along the north property line, because.
So the variance would be they'd withdraw this and have to resubmit. That's up to the applicant, as I understand it.
Well, so, if you let me kind of explain. Okay, so right now, he's presenting a plan that meets the regulations of the ordinance. So if he decides to try to seek a variance for that increase or decrease of the front setback and increase of the rear, blah, 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 that would go to the city council. So if for some reason it fails, then he still has a plat, a valid plat, developed with 60-foot front and 50-foot rear and/or if and when the text amendment gets approved in January. I mean, he's not going to be at the point where he's building houses in eight weeks. So he will be able to submit his LDP and show at least the change of, if it gets approved, the text amendment that proposes a 50-foot front and a 60-foot rear. So it's not about, in my opinion, and the city attorney can correct me, but it's not about, oh, well, he needs to withdraw this. It's about, okay, is it option A or B? So that's how Blakely on Freemenville worked as well. They came in with a preliminary plat, it got approved with 60 front, 50 rear. Then subsequently, he went to city council, asked for that, that flip-flopping of the variance and he received it. So either way, he could develop the lots as proposed, as far as the number of lots.
I guess, I guess mine is more of the, the recommendation on this plat is, should we include that? Do, do we include that the development director could also look at future changes in code in?
Yes.
In accommodating this?
Yeah, because again, I, I kind of look at this as, we're approving 10 home sites that meet all the requirements, are all over an acre. This is just to give us some idea or conceptual, it's been mentioned a couple, this is what it could look like. But once they get to actual, you know, so ours is, okay, can we, do we approve the 10 lots the way they're laid out here?
We don't approve.
But we don't approve, do we recommend approving that? And what are the conditions we'd like them to try to work with them? Because again, Chatham could say, sorry, screw you guys, we're, we're.
And in the past, we haven't necessarily recommended approval or denial, we just recommended.
Conditions to put on them.
Yeah, we've recommended, look at this before you approve.
Right, right. That's more of your recommendation.
Right, okay.
And just for clarity too, this is not, this really, there, there's no need of proof today for the tree canopy requirements being met, because that comes at a later date before the LDP is.
In the past, it got done so late that all of a sudden there were tree variances and I want to avoid that.
So our recommendation would be to.
Look at it sooner.
Make sure that the plan has.
Viable.
And accommodate it, yeah.
Again, I think that, that is staff to track that down because I can guarantee you, there's a way to make that coverage on a 1.2 acre lot. You can have 57% tree canopy. We, we do it all day long. We do it on, on acre lots, right? I mean, so whether or not these sizes are the, are right, and even with all the septic, we do it on acre lots. So they, they, they will be able to get 57% coverage. But again, it's going to be on, the illness is going to be on staff to when they come in with the houses to then look at that. But that's not our, that's not what's in front of us right now.
As far as I'm concerned, it is because we've had problems with it before. I want them to look at it sooner.
But again.
I'll, I'll try my motion again. I withdraw the previous motion. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the community development director that she review the hydrology drainage feasibility, the tree canopy requirement feasibility, the potential for additional evergreen screening along the north border of the property, and consider the potential impact of pending updates to the code in her review of this plat.
Nothing about the, nothing about moving the.
The setbacks, that's, that's what she's.
That's what I'm saying, the, the.
Okay.
The code.
But even without the code, I think I would suggest a variance then, because again, that's only helping the neighbors.
That's up to the, that's up to the developer if they want to ask for variance and not the community development director. We can't have somebody to have a variance, can we, Paul?
No, you.
No, but we'd like her to consider it.
Yeah, it's not hers to consider, it's the developer.
You can ask her to encourage the developer, but.
But if, if the text amendment goes through, he doesn't need it.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the text amendment is not as aggressive as what the applicant is proposing. So at least at this point in time, so.
But let me try it again. I will amend my motion to include or to discuss with the developer a potential variance to increase the setback on the north property lines.
A second.
Okay. I hope somebody got all of that because I don't even know if I can remember.
In the recording, we love recordings.
Okay, so is there any discussion, further discussion? Okay. I have a, I have a motion from Commissioner Birds with a second from Commissioner Knowlty for the recommendations as stated for the preliminary plat for Little River Farms Phase Two, U 20, is this U 2502? Sorry. No, it is not U 2502. That's an oversight. Never mind.
There's no, there's no case number.
Scratch that on the U 2502. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you all for your input.
Let me just be clear, just because we, doesn't mean we like it.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we agree with it. Means it meets the law.
Hey, we'll take a, let's take a 30-second break to allow the people who don't want to listen to the next sections. We have no rezonings or use permit applications tonight. There are no text amendments to the City of Milton Unified Development Code. There are no changes to the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan and other plans. There are no old business items. We have several items under new business. First is a review of the third quarter tree waivers. Welcome back, Ms. Sandra DeWitt, our arborist.
Thank you. Good evening, members of Planning Commission. For the record, Sandra DeWitt with Community Development. I am here to present tonight to you the tree waivers that were issued in the last quarter. And there we go. Hold on, okay. So just as a background reminder for you, the tree ordinance, Article 11.1.1C, authorizer, authorizes the administrator to waive any provision of the tree ordinance. Administrator shall deter. Administrator shall determine if waiver is justified through documentation submitted by the applicant. Approved waivers will then be presented to Planning Commission. Planning Commission may recommend amendments to the tree ordinance at this time. So for this last quarter, there was just one tree waiver issued. And actually I haven't had any in a few quarters. So I think it's been almost a year since we've done this. So that's good. This last quarter, the tree waiver we issued was for twelve eight seventy five Highway nine, which is for Seven Brew Coffee. If you're like me, I got excited when I heard Seven Brew because I thought it was going to be a brewery, but it's a coffee shop. So just to give you an idea of the location, in case you're not familiar. This is near the corner of Highway nine and Windward Parkway. I think we are familiar with the Walmart parking lot. And this is an out parcel outlined here in red. Where the coffee shop is going. So as you can see in this aerial, the existing tree canopy out there is pretty minimal to begin with. We just had a few trees here on the north side. And a few on the south side that really kind of straddles the Walmart parking lot and this adjacent lot. Unfortunately, some of the ones along Highway nine had already been removed by GDOT in preparation of the Highway nine road widening project. I think we're all familiar with that one. So the trees that were existing here were small pines, sweet gums, yellow poplars, what I call the pioneer species. This lot had obviously been disturbed before. So this is just kind of secondary growth. Nothing was planted out here. So the request was for a waiver from Article eleven point one, point three D two. Which states that existing trees must make up at least one third of the required canopy coverage. So the reasons given for the necessity of this waiver was the small lot size they were working with. It is currently point seven seven acres or around thirty three thousand square feet. There are engineering constraints to meet stormwater requirements. As you saw with the small white, they were very limited on where and how they could put in their stormwater management. And as I mentioned before, existing trees on the site were mostly made up of volunteer pine, sweet gum and yellow poplar. So here is a site plan with landscaping of the site. This is in Deerfield Form Based Code Zone T five. And the lot size, as I said, is point seven seven acres. So it was very small and it's very tight to work with. The canopy coverage for T five is ten percent. So I thought this was going to be easy because if you think about it, a third of ten percent is not very much. But due to the size of it and with the requirements we had for the landscaping in the front. And we wanted them to put in a nice pavilion area. And with the way they had to configure the drive through, they wanted a double drive through. So to get that in and to do that, there was really little room to remove tree, to save trees. And like I said, there weren't many to save to begin with. This gray area here at the bottom is where the stormwater system is put in. And to put that in, they were going to have to do a lot of grading here on the south side. And this went to DRB and one of DRB recommendations was to do new plantings along that strip. So they wanted to meet the requirement of the DRB condition as well. So with that said though, this proposed tree canopy that they have, the planting along Highway nine. The planting in the parking lot. And this landscape strip adjacent to the Walmart parking lot actually gives them a proposed replacement canopy of fifty percent. So with this reasoning, we determined that it was justified to issue the waiver in this case. So we are finding that most of these waiver cases for the third existing canopy are happening on these tight lots where they don't have a lot of room to work with.
And so the, the waiver was because it didn't meet the canopy coverage requirement?
No, they couldn't meet the one third coming from existing canopy to remain.
But.
Because they didn't have a lot of existing canopy to work with to begin with.
In my opinion, this is going to look a lot nicer than what was.
I think so. I think so.
Good judgment.
So if you have any further questions or recommendations, I'll take them at this time. No, yep, this one was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, you listed those and I was like nuisance tree, nuisance tree, nuisance.
We love all our trees.
We love our oaks and.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you for your help earlier as well. We'd like to give you more work, but proactively, not reactively.
No problem.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an overview of the proposed large lots incentives. I would like to it was on our agenda for tonight. They, there is still some more work that has to be done and the Equestrian Committee wanted to weigh in additionally on that. So I would propose we defer that to the future meeting.
I mean, it's already been administratively deferred, so you don't need to make a. Yeah, so you're good. But just to, for the record. To add to what Ms. Birds had said is that apparently the Milton Equestrian Committee had some more questions or some items that they wanted to look at again. So that's the reasoning behind deferring it or administratively deferring it. So it's not. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is to update the progress on the comprehensive plan. Midterm five year update, Ms. Robin McDonald.
Okay, thank you. Before we start that, I just want to make a quick announcement. I think you've been invited to the volunteer appreciation dinner on Thursday, November fifth. So I just want to remind you guys about that. And if you have an RSVP, please do.
For Wednesday, the fifth?
It's actually on.
It's the sixth then.
I'm sorry.
Or is, am I off?
I'm sorry. I, I made a copy of the invitation.
We just got an email today also on a Thursday, November sixth.
It's Thursday, the sixth.
Don't come on the wrong day.
Yes, I'm, I'm so sorry. I was just looking at my calendar and obviously I, I knew it was a Thursday because it's a little odd day off. But anyway, we just really encourage you to come. It's a lot of great food and, and being able to hang out with your other fellow volunteers. So anyway. It's putting a plug in for it. Okay, tonight, I'm just going to review fairly quickly the update on our process for the Conference of Plan twenty forty. Five year update. I'll just go through this at Milton's schedule, October to December of twenty twenty five, project planning, citizen advisory committee appointments. In the next couple or three months, January through May is going to be the public engagement. Survey, citizen advisory committee meetings. June through August, draft review, transmittal to DCA. Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Commission. And then September of twenty six, the plan adoption. As an update for this month, the consultant team has been selected and it's Kim Lee Horn. The first project team meeting will be scheduled momentarily. November task, putting together the technical assistance panel of staff members from the following departments. Community Development, Public Works, Communications, Parks and Rec. For the elected officials, they would be needing to nominate their citizen advisory committee members to work alongside the Planning Commission, BZA Chair and the DRB Chair. So the Citizen Advisory Committee will meet in person once a month from January to May to draft the Conference of Plan. Twenty forty five. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So this is a midyear update, but there's, in my mind. We've got to incorporate UGB, the Urban Growth Boundaries, the, the Arnold Mill Plan, the Deerfield Plan, the District at Mayfield Plan. And kudos to staff who knocked out almost all of the action items from five years ago. So the greater thing will be to say, what do we need to work on for the next five years? Because there's not much left on the list from five years ago. So.
Yeah, you guys have done a good job on that. So thank you.
Yes.
I will pass that on to Shuba and the rest of the department. So we appreciate that. And also just.
I've missed our red, yellow, green, blue updates because they've.
Well, she'll come the next time. It's DiWali this week, so.
Oh, that's right.
But just also a part of the update will be looking at the future land use map. There's some corrections that need to be updates to be made along with all the other studies and everything. So, yeah. Anyway, so with that.
Any other questions about the planning? And typically the, the planet, the entire planning commission is on that committee.
All the members, yes. You get the privilege of every one of you to be on the CPAC. So, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments for the general good of the order?
Yeah, I've, I've got something. I'm not going to be here next month. And so I want to take this opportunity just to announce I'm not going to be seeking or accepting renomination to the planning commission going forward. Yeah, I've had the pleasure of doing this for the last seven plus years. I've enjoyed it. It's, it's been great, but I think it's time to get some new blood and for to move on. And since I won't be here for November, I'm not sure what's going on in December. I just wanted to be sure that I took this opportunity to thank the city and staff. You guys have done a great job. You keep us, you, you keep us honest. You keep us real, Paul. You keep us out of jail most of the time. So thank you. I appreciate that. No, you guys, you guys do, you, you do Herculean work and it, it shows. And also I'd like to thank the fellow commissioners for all the efforts and everything we're putting in to help keep Milton the city that we know. I do hope this commission continues to ask the difficult questions. We're, you know, you guys are like the first line of defense against development for the citizens of Milton. And, you know, I, I hope you guys certainly keep that up. So, but thank you guys for the opportunity. I've enjoyed it. It's, it's been fun, but my time to roll.
Commissioner Nolte, thank you. You will be missed and you have certainly made an impact. So you will have literally and physically big shoes to fit.
What I said I wasn't doing, I'd heard the entire staff go, oh, thank God. Oh, thank God. No, thank God. I do appreciate that. But.
We do appreciate your time.
And with that, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.